I'd like to call the April 10, 2014, meeting of Williamsburg City Council to order. Lisa, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Pond.
Here.
Mayor Hallman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Byron.
Mr. Pond.
Here.
Our first order of business is council minutes from the meetings of March 10 and March 13, 2014. The March 11 joint school board meeting of March 11 and the budget work session of March 24. Are there any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I move the city council approve the meeting minutes from the March 10 and March 13 meetings, the March 11 joint school board meeting, and the budget work session meeting of March 24.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll in please, Lisa?
Ms. Wilson. Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Hallman.
I'm going to abstain on the March 10, 13, and 11 meetings and eye to the work session meeting of March 24.
Vice Mayor Byron.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Next order of business is matters of special privilege. First, we have an excellence in service to Williamsburg presented to Assistant to the Chief of Police Debbie Middlebrook. Debbie, if you would join me at the podium. I might want to come around here so the camera can see. This is one of those times when we get to honor one of our employees, and what's important about this is it comes from other employees and it's a recognition for our service to the city of Williamsburg. So I have a proclamation I'm going to read, and then we'll let you say something, and then I'll have a plaque for you. So let me begin with this. This is, "The city of Williamsburg takes pleasure in recognizing Debbie Middlebrook for excellence in service to Williamsburg. Debbie Middlebrook has faithfully and effectively served Williamsburg for over 37 years as Assistant to the Chief of Police. Ms. Middlebrook is responsible for payroll, training bulletins, administrative order maintenance, and many other tasks. She is Williamsburg's accreditation manager for the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, consistently reviewing activities within the department, ensuring compliance with rigorous CALAS standards. Debbie is also the police grant manager and has secured over $1 million for Williamsburg law enforcement in that role over the last 20 years. Debbie is dependable and self-motivated and takes pride in ensuring that every task is completed and documented correctly. She is dedicated to the highest ideals of professionalism in police and city administration. Debbie holds an associate degree in business administration. She is a certified law enforcement fitness trainer through the Cooper Institute in Texas and serves on the city health and wellness task force and walking club subcommittee. Debbie Middlebrook is an exemplary city employee who is vital to the success of Williamsburg's police department. Debbie Middlebrook is hereby recognized for her dedication to excellence and keeping with the highest tradition of public service in the city of Williamsburg, as stated today, April 10, 2014, and signed by me as mayor and Jack Tuttle as city manager. Debbie, congratulations."
I just want to say thank you, and it's been a pleasure and honor to work for the city of Williamsburg.
Thank you. And this is for you to hang wherever.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. We have a second matter of special privilege from some news we just got. Phil, Sarah, would you go to the podium, please? Phil, you have some news for us, I believe.
Yes, I do, Mayor Hallman, members of council. I will read this, it's a press release. It's from Standard and Poor's in New York City. Williamsburg, Virginia, general obligation bond rating raised to AAA from AA+ on application of local general obligation criteria. This came out April 8. Standard and Poor's Rating Services has raised its long-term rating on Williamsburg, Virginia's general obligation bonds one notch to AAA from AA+. The outlook is stable. The upgrade is based on our local GEO criteria released September 12, 2013, said Standard and Poor's credit analyst Lindsey Wilhelm. The AAA rating reflects our view of the city's very strong economy, very strong budgetary flexibility, strong budgetary performance, very strong liquidity, very strong management, and very strong debt and contingent liability profile. The stable outlook reflects our view of Williamsburg's very strong financial and liquidity position, coupled with its limited debt needs, given its use of the sales tax for capital projects. We believe that the city's strong management has contributed to financial strength that mitigates some of the risk associated with the tourism-based local economy. We expect Williamsburg to maintain its financial strength and therefore do not expect to change the rating within the two-year outlook horizon. However, should the city fail to take appropriate action to mitigate volatility or declines in economically sensitive revenues in the future, we could lower the rating. So this is our news of the week.
All right. Thank you, Phil. And for a city of under 15,000 people, that's an unusually high rating for...
Yes, I understand.
Yeah, thank you. And congratulations to you and all the staff for that. That's, I think, a reflection of the good work that you've done.
There must have been a slight oversight, because I didn't hear the part about the exceptionally strong city council. Some things are just...
Next time, I'll share that. But congratulations, Phil. That's terrific.
That's wonderful.
Our next order of business is budget presentation, and today we have with us the Williamsburg-James City County Schools and their budget presentation. We have with us today Dr. Steve Constantino, Superintendent. Also, I believe we have several members of the school board here. Chair Ruth Larson is with us today. Thank you for being here, Ruth. Jim Nichol is here today, so thank you, Jim. I think hiding in the back, I think I see Oscar Prater back there, so thank you for being here today. If I've missed anyone, I'm sorry, but, okay, who's going to take off? Ruth? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Good afternoon, members of the city council, Mayor Hallman, and Mr. Tuttle. I am here today with the superintendent, Dr. Steve Constantino, my colleagues on the board, and members of the superintendent's staff to provide you an overview of the school division budget unanimously adopted by the board at our March 18 meeting. I will also be happy to answer any questions you have about the budget we are proposing. From the board's perspective, the key funding drivers in the budget are directly in line with school board priorities and, more importantly, the continued implementation of our five-year strategic plan. Continuing to attract and retain quality teachers and looking to the future with regard to the learning needs of students are clearly supported in the proposed budget. We recognize the need to upgrade and expand our alternative learning services to meet the needs of our ever-changing student population and support all classrooms by ensuring our growing enrollment is reflected in the number of teachers we employ. We are pleased to report to you that plans are already underway to enlarge the Berkeley Middle School cafeteria, a plan that was included in the CIP a few years ago but removed in the final budget adopted by the county. We are doing so by using existing CIP funds and recognize that this will be welcomed by the Berkeley community. The CIP also includes field enhancement at Berkeley as well. And as we have discussed publicly, the school board supported the superintendent's recommendation to build a new middle school and central office facility. We are most appreciative of the partnership we continue to have with our colleagues in the city of Williamsburg and in James City County. I think we can all agree that the education of our students remains one of this community's top priorities, and we are here to work with you to do what we can to ensure that the education we provide in our school system is relevant to the needs of students now and well into the future. There is no question in any of our minds about the economic value of our school system and our need to support its growth and improvements. I'm now going to turn it over to Dr. Constantino so that he can share some of the highlights of the budget, and then he will ask our chief financial officer, Ms. Terri Stone, to take you through the specifics of the proposed budget. I will be happy to answer any questions you have at the conclusion of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Larson.
Good afternoon to members of the council, Mayor Hallman, and Mr. Tuttle. I appreciate the opportunity to present the proposed budget for the Williamsburg-James City School Division. As Mrs. Larson said, our goals for this proposed budget were clear and straightforward. First, we must ensure that we have allowed for required and non-negotiable items. Second, we must adhere as closely as we can to the priorities established by the school board and our strategic plan. And last, we understand that to continue on our pathway to premier, we must commit to investing in those programs and services that support the learning of all of our students, with particular attention focused on subgroup performance and the needs of students who are struggling. Even though we've experienced reductions in operating expenses over the past several years, we continue to maintain and improve student learning outcomes in the vast majority of subjects and levels, but we are not without our challenges. While not meant to be a comprehensive list of successes or challenges, I'd like to focus you on just a few items which we can all take some pride and have maneuvered through this new fiscal reality. Of the 136 school divisions in the state of Virginia, only 36 of those school divisions earned full state accreditation. Williamsburg-James City County was one of those school divisions. Williamsburg-James City County exceeded state averages on standards of learning tests in reading, writing, math, and science, and in several areas including chemistry, U.S. history, 4th grade Virginia studies, 11th grade reading and writing. Our pass rates were above 90 percent. Additionally, WJCC students surpassed state and national averages on the SAT, ACT, and PSAT. Our dropout rate for students in grades 7 through 12 has decreased, and the percentage of students earning scores of 3, 4, or 5 on AP exams has increased substantially. Percentages of subgroup students earning a regular high school diploma continues to trend upward. This continued strong performance is a direct result of having excellent teachers in the classroom and leaders in our buildings. Our challenges continue to include certain subgroup performance areas, including students with special needs. We must provide more support and services to these students. The proposed budget includes a continued focus on these areas with targeted increases in teacher support. Later this spring, we will be sharing with the school board the results of our second year of the implementation of the strategic plan and unveiling our new strategic management system, or dashboard system, which will provide internal and external stakeholders with up-to-date performance information on both the instructional and operation sides of the school division. Further, we'll be sharing with the school board and community the division scorecard, which has been created to provide measurement for the goals of the strategic plan and to set indicators to ensure continuous improvement. And next week, we will host our first-ever division-wide parent academy, which will help rising 6th grade and middle school students' families develop strategies to support learning at home, which we know is an important component to student success. The proposed budget reflects a $3.8 million increase in state funding. That increase, however, is due in large part to increased enrollments in our school division. This year, WJCC enrollment was 10,998 students, a 250-student increase over the previous year, or 2.3 percent, the largest we have seen since 2009. Through program evaluations, restructurings, and other efficiencies, and understanding that our governing bodies are still faced with financial challenges, our goal was to try to build a budget that met our needs but minimized, to the best of our ability, local funding requests. This budget represents a 1.9 percent local funding increase, which is a significant decrease from the 3.9 percent increase the division requested one year ago. Our FY 2015 enrollment is projected now to be 11,131 students. As a result, we are adding 19 teaching positions across the division. With a rapidly growing English language learner population, the state's standards of quality require us to add a certified English-as-a-second-language teacher as well. The division also faces significant increases in the retirement contribution rates for teachers in the Virginia retirement system. This significant rate increase is a result of the deferral of VRS costs in previous state budgets. Two years ago, we were faced with the first wave of mandated pension reform initiatives, and due to very limited resources and a desire to reduce program cuts, we chose to phase in the 5 percent employee deduction. The proposed budget completes, this proposed budget completes the final three years of that phase-in to support employee contributions. Doing so will position us to continue to support increased employee compensation in the future budgets, as well as continue to offer a competitive salary in comparison with surrounding school divisions. Even with a significant amount of non-negotiable items in our budget, we were able to address some of the school board's FY 2015 budget priorities. Part of the flexibility that we have is a result of our commitment to efficiencies and program reviews. With our work in the North Star Project and the conclusion and consolidation of other programs, we were able to redirect approximately $300,000 to other areas of the budget. These efforts, which will continue, helps lessen our need to reduce other programs and services. In addition to a 1 percent salary increase for employees, is a deeper commitment to flexible learning opportunities for students. This proposed budget includes a $300,000 placeholder for piloting a division-based alternative education program. While a specific program has yet to be identified, this budget earmarks funding to begin that process. It is important that we improve our efforts to support non-traditional learners and those students with special needs. The approved capital improvement plan includes resources for a new middle school and, if that middle school is located at the James Blair site, and that seems to be a big if, funds for a central office relocation. We have used resources, CIP resources wisely, and as a result have been able to limit requests in the CIP. We also have supported the board's administrative priority of a bus replacement plan. Establishing a bus replacement plan will ensure ongoing new bus purchases to address our aging fleet. The CIP continues the standard refurbishment cycle of school facilities and the continuation of the technology refresh project, as well as baseball field refurbishment at Berkeley. Over the next year, we will conduct a comprehensive review of all division athletic fields and expect that the FY 2016 CIP to include additional identified projects. I appreciate the partnership, we appreciate the partnership that we have developed with the city council, and we thank you for your continued support and encouragement of our efforts. We have an excellent school system and have created a clear pathway to keep it that way. I'm pleased to introduce to you Ms. Terri Stone, our chief financial officer, who will share even more specific budget information with you, and like Mrs. Larson, I'm happy to take any questions at the conclusion. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
Good afternoon, members of council, Mayor Hallman, Mr. Tuttle. Dr. Constantino covered quite a bit of it, so we'll see what I have left that's new and interesting. Oh, congratulations on your rating upgrade. That's excellent. Great news. First of all, and he had shared some numbers in regards to the operating budget revenue, the local revenue appropriation increases 1.5 million, or 1.9 percent. If you add with that the local state sales tax, it's a total of 1.7 million, or 2 percent. Again, you can see that the state revenue is increasing by 3.8 million, or 13.8 percent, but we're also going to share some non-negotiable expenditure increases that were associated with that revenue increase. And then the other revenues are increasing only by just over $48,000. Oops. It's just a table that recaps at a glance some of the statistics. You see the enrollment that we discussed, the enrollment assumption that was being used. The total operating budget is increasing by 5.6 million to 121.5 million, or overall a 4.8 percent increase. FTEs are increasing by 23, or 1.5, and then the per pupil expenditure increases just $292, which does not include adult education or pre-K. We had shared earlier those non-negotiable expenses. You can see that that's 3.5 million, which attributes to 3 percent of that total 4.8 percent increase. And then staffing associated with their increased enrollment makes up 1.2 million, or is another 1 percent of that total increase. This is a lot of numbers, clearly, and all of it is in our budget document, but it's basically just a revenue recap of what I just shared in regards to the dollar increases and the percent increases in terms of total local revenue, state revenue, federal revenue, and then the other. This is a pie chart that shows our operating revenue summary, and you can see that 64.1 percent of the total operating is local funding. And if you add to that the 9.56 percent that is local sales tax funding, the total local funding for our budget is 73.7 percent, which is clearly a significant number. The state funding makes up 25.73 percent of our total funding. In regards to operating expenditures, first, we had decreases when we started the budget process. We had base budget reductions of seven, over $700,000, and that included attrition associated with turnover in positions. We also had the final elimination or phase-out of the LPN program, which was the savings of $120,000. And then there were other reductions within different line items such as legal expenditures, overtime, and substitute costs for that total savings. In regards to our operating expenditure increases, first, as most of us have read about, is the increase to the VRS teacher pool rate. That was an increase of 24.4 percent, and for Williamsburg-James City County, that was a cost of one, over 1.8 million. Our employer health insurance increase is increasing by 8.3 percent, which is 1.1 million. Am I causing that to move? Okay. And then, as Dr. Constantino shared, we're completing the implementation of the employee VRS 5 percent deduction. 1 percent of that was mandated. We're completing all three years, which is a cost of $636,000. The approved budget also includes a 1 percent wage increase of $823,000. The alternative education program enhancement that Dr. Constantino shared had a cost of $300,000. And then we previously had athletic trainers classified as instructional positions, and that was counted in the pupil-teacher ratio, so we now have, are counting those positions as non-instructional, as non-instructional, which results in the addition of three instructional In regards to other staffing changes, we touched on the additional classroom teachers as a result of enrollment. That was 16 classroom teachers. We're adding that additional ESL teacher for our growing population in English language learners. We have a technology support position that will be out in the schools, in the classroom, addressing the needs associated with increased student devices. A part-time human resources position to address data processing and other needs there. And then we're increasing a math specialist from .85 to a point, to a full-time position, which is a .15 increase. This is a pie chart of our operating expenditures by function. You can see that 74.4 percent of our total expenditures is in the area of instruction. We then have, leading up, is operations and maintenance at 9.2 percent. Transportation represents 6.4 percent of our budget. Technology, 4.2 percent of our budget. Attendance and health makes up 3.6 percent of our budget, and then administration is 2.3 percent of our total budget. If we look at it by object, our total budget, you can see that 61.5 percent is compensation of our employees and 26.4 percent are the associated benefits. So of the total position, 87.9 percent is in the area of compensation and benefits, which is what you would expect from a service-driven organization. And then we have 4.1 percent in other charges, 3.1 percent in purchasing, purchase of service, and you can see the additional ones. Material supplies is 3.7 percent. And all of this is included in our budget document, which can be found online. That's the details that I have associated with the operating budget. I can quickly cover the capital improvement budget, and then we'll take any questions. So the capital improvement budget, the approved budget, included our standard refurbishment and replacement cycle for all of our school facilities. As you know, it included a fourth middle school with design in fiscal year 15 and construction in fiscal year 16. It had a new central office facility. We had included a bus replacement plan that was age-based, based upon 15 years of service, and then also the Berkeley Middle School baseball refurbishment. A list of the projects are here with the associated cost, and the total was $23.9 And that is all that I have, but I'd be happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Let me come back to council for questions, and they may be for the superintendent and Ms. Larson as well. Paul?
Just a couple of questions. The reference to the refurbishment of the baseball field at Berkeley, does that include the adjoining areas where the football team practices and the field hockey team plays, or is it specifically just the baseball field?
I think it's specifically just the baseball field.
It's specifically the baseball field.
The one, I realize that this is not something that's probably dealt with at the administration level, but in talking to my insiders at Berkeley, the information that I've received indicates that cafeteria time is one of those when those who might be less interested in following the rules tend to express themselves. And as you bring more students into a cafeteria, certainly more space will help, because the more constrained students are, the more conflict that can result. But I, even though it's probably an individual school decision, I would hope the administration could support Ms. Swan in whatever human resources are necessary to ensure a harmonious environment in that expanded cafeteria.
And that's a good point. As a former principal, I can tell you that there are three points in the day that are nerve-wracking: arrival, lunch, and dismissal. The rest of it goes pretty well. We've talked to the school, of course, you know, Berkeley is our only middle school with a second full-time assistant principal because of the size of the school. We've talked about the possibility of cafeteria monitors, monitors doing what we need to do in those cafeterias that are either larger or serving large numbers of students. There's been a lot of discussion with all of the elementary principals and middle school principals to that degree about making sure that we have the safest environment as we can. I also think that serving time has been very slow. It's been a long process. It's been a disjointed process. That probably grates on the nerves of kids as well, and I think once we have this, once we have, it probably grates on the nerves of the adults as well. Once we have this change made in this expansion, I hope that does, has some, attributes some to the improved environment of lunch. But lunch is always an exciting time.
Yeah. Can you talk to the increases, I think you called it significant, maybe increase in scores of 3, 4, or 5 on the ACT? Is any of that related to the need for the families to fund their own testing as opposed to the school funding the testing, and how many tests are actually being taken?
Yeah. That would be an interesting study to do. We're not exactly sure, I don't know the answer to that question. I can tell you that we've done much more in promoting advanced placement to more students, so we have increased numbers of students choosing advanced placement. We have seen a slight uptick, not as much as I'd like to see, but a slight uptick in the number of students who perhaps traditionally wouldn't take advanced placement classes taking them, and so that's been a barrier for our high school principals and our guidance counselors. I suppose that one could draw a conclusion that when you have a little financial skin in the game, there's more, there's more interest in doing well, but I don't, I don't have any data to support that that is true, but it certainly is a logical conclusion one can make.
And could you also talk to the relationship of the new alternative education initiative yet to be defined to the existing coach program? Is there a connection, or?
Well, let me give you the perfect administrative answer. Yes and no. The Student Advancement Coach Program had a defined set of goals in terms of identifying students and supporting students and working with families and trying to capture and catch students who were showing signs of falling between the students who were showing signs of falling between the cracks. And we have a great deal of data that we've shared with the school board to say that that program has done just that. We have data from our families, well over 80 percent of our families who understand the program, know their students, Student Advancement Coach, appreciate the program, can see positive changes in their kids. Kids who understand the program, the numbers of kids who are asking for more adult intervention and assistance. All of those things have increased tremendously under the Student Advancement Coach Program. What I don't have a lot of data of is what kind of academic success are these particular students having, which suggests that we need to do a better job on the academic side of alternative education as we are doing on, on perhaps the social or emotional side of this issue, because it's a, it's a multifaceted problem. Students who are struggling in school are often struggling at home, struggling in other areas of their lives, and so I think we have two thirds of this equation down. I think the last third is, have we provided the academic environment for these non-traditional learners to be more successful? And so, we don't think we have. We think we need to do a better job. And so, the money that I've asked the board to earmark, right now, as part of our strategic plan, we're looking at the whole notion of flexible learning. The whole country is moving toward understanding that standards-driven education, students may master, some students may master a standard in four months, some students could master a standard in eight months, some students could master a standard in two weeks. And what do we do? And so, the one-size-fits-all mentality may not be the best course of action. So, technology and blended learning environment, all of those things are giving us better, more and better options to help kids move, move on when ready, so that when you have mastered the learning that you need to master and you've proven that mastery, we can move you on. That same concept, then, needs to be applied to alternative education. What do you need? When do you need it? How do you need it? And where do you need it? And so, if someone needs extra time in mathematics but doesn't need that time in English, we think that we can create a program with flexibility using technology, using blended learning models, which means a combination of teacher-assisted instruction and technology, to help kids who, for lots of different reasons, just don't fare well in a traditional eight-to-three school.
That sounds very encouraging, as does your mention of the Parent Academy for the rising middle schoolers, or students moving into the sixth grade, because I can appreciate how traumatic that can be to move from the comfortable cocoon of elementary school into the big scary world of middle school. So I hope, I wish you great success there, and would also encourage you to think, if you do see success in that effort, think about what aspects of that are applicable to the transition, then, from middle to high school, where the scheduling is so dramatically different that it can be a real challenge for student and parent alike.
This is the first of what I hope will be several types of academies. We're going to run our first one and see what we did well and what we didn't do well and learn from that. But a couple of years ago, when we did some reorganization at the central office, and when we wrote the strategic plan, we understood the notion of family engagement as a conduit to student achievement. And so, we have been working on trainings inside our schools, trainings with our principals. We had a lot of internal work to do, quite frankly, to set the stage for something like the Parent Academy. So, creating the Office of Family and Community Engagement, focusing on what can we do to help families help their kids, this is, this is our first step into, you know, will this kind of, will this kind of model work? Will it be received well? And if it is, we know not only the transitions to high schools, but there are numerous, there are numerous aspects of helping families help their kids that we can explore. It's not just limited to those transitions. It's parents' understanding of SOLs, parents' understanding at the high school level, for example, the maze of college and career, and all, all kinds of issues out there. So, we have grand plans. We hope this one goes well, and we hope to follow it up with lots of other ones throughout the years.
Great. Thank you.
Scott?
I'll just say to Paul, I've heard from a number of parents, students at Berkeley beyond the two on council, that there's a significant dynamic at that particular school that needs some attention. So I think this lunchroom expansion is probably a great first step.
Yeah. To recall, a couple of years ago, when we, we put the lunchroom expansion on the CIP, it was tied to classroom additions. We, and that, I think because we tied it to that classroom addition and because the middle school decision was still up in the air, we didn't know that in 2014 it would still be up in the air, but at that time it was up in the air, it made logical sense, I guess, for that to be removed. So, we've known for a few years that that's a problem, and I'm glad that we're finally at the point where we can take care of it.
Very good. Doug?
I do. Thank you for listening to those concerns about Berkeley and taking some action there. And I'm, you know, as I look through the budget and think of all the parents with children in the school division and all of the different points of tension that you, the administration, have with parents and providing everything that everybody wants is very challenging. And so, appreciate, you know, the hard work that goes into that for, for not just the administration, but the school board. One of the things that I'm also clear in my mind is that the number-one aspect to a good quality education is the teachers, the people who interact with these students every day. And so, I'm glad to see that you proposed 1 percent raise to teachers and other staff members. I think that goes a long way. But to that, how does that, how does that position us in the marketplace? Are we where we need to be? Are we behind the eight ball? I'm sure everybody would like to be paid more.
There's a general consensus that if we had more money, they'd take it.
For sure.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's true. I'm going to give you my best answer.
Yes and no.
And if the CFO starts to roll her eyes, she may stand up and try to clarify my comments. But we have, we have really two, we have three goals, and it's hard to have three employee goals with 1 percent. That's not a great deal. But one goal is certainly to continue to fairly compensate the workforce. The second goal is a goal that has been, to start to reverse the compression of the salary scale that has been created by a number of years where there's been no money to devote to, to staff. And that's, that's a very complicated issue that the board will begin to address should we, should the final budget be adopted. The third issue is recruitment and retention, and really with a focus on recruitment. What is actually driving, you know, in terms of our salary, we're in the ballpark with all of our neighbors. We watch that very, very closely. However, those schools that three years ago made a decision to just pay that 5 percent, look on paper to have a higher salary. And a 23-year-old teacher tends to focus on the salary, less, it's hard to have a conversation about retirement with a brand-new teacher. That's not really in their, what they think about, or insurance benefits. So sometime, what we're, what we're concerned about is that young teachers coming out of college will look at a piece of paper and see two salaries and say, "That one is higher," when in fact, it's really flow-through VRS money, and it's not higher, but trying to explain that. So, the 1 percent is significant, but also the funding and the support for the VRS is actually going to help us be more competitive and gain perhaps a slight edge with respect to some of our competitors. So, that's a, it's a big piece and a big driver of what we're trying to do.
Good. And an equally big piece of making sure we have employees wanting to work in this environment is the compensation, but the morale, the overall feeling of place, and is that something that's an ongoing program to make sure that, that we have a, a good morale?
There, there's no question that these last few years have been tough years for our school district and every school district. You know, morale is low. There seems to be some national attitudes about public education. You know, you, you don't have to look far to have someone criticizing, you know, the ability for public schools to successfully educate children. And I think that does take its toll on the workforce. We are implementing our core values. We are doing all we can to demonstrate that we value the, we're very lucky. We have a good workforce, and we're fighting very hard to keep it that way. We have people who want to be in Williamsburg, who stay in Williamsburg, who do a good job for us. And so, job number one is attracting the very best that we can. Job number two is retaining the good ones that we already have. And so, certainly doing all we can to improve morale. I think the fact that we have put something in the budget to, to compensate employees has gone a long way. It's a tough job, and less and less people are going into education, and, you know, you, it's just become as, as much of a commodity as every other business.
Yeah. Well, I know it's, it's often a thankless job, but for me and my perspective, thank you and your staff for all the hard work that you do, and I'm sure council feels the same way. So, thank you.
Thanks. Judy?
Steve, thank you for coming. Thank everybody who's here for the schools. I have a question about Bright Beginnings. Pre-K is a big deal in the country now. Everybody talks about how kindergarten is too late, and I actually agree with that. I noticed that pre-K was not part of your per-pupil, here goes, numbers here? Are there plans to keep it the same, increase it?
The plan is to keep it where it is. No decreases are being requested or have been at, you know, there's been no discussion of decreasing the Bright Beginnings program. If you'll recall, a budget or two ago, there was a slight decrease to the program.
Right.
Those people are pretty, they're pretty resourceful teachers. They've absorbed some of that, you know. In those years where we have lost things, people have figured out ways to make do. We still have a waiting list of about 57 or 58 students who we could take tomorrow if we had the space. I would anticipate in the future, Ms. Newsom, that we probably have to discuss an expansion of that program. And we're looking at that, we're trying to look at that over a number of years as opposed to dropping some side of a bomb on, you know, well, we need $1.7 million to make this program. But what, what can we do strategically over time that will continue to assist with those students? We have seen since 2010, I believe, we've seen an increase of 7 percent in socio-economically disadvantaged families in our school system. We have seen a significant change in families for whom English is not a first language. And, and so, there are some correlations between those families and students who are served in programs like Bright Beginnings and in programs like the one we hope to create with our own alternative learning. And we're aware of that. We have the, we have the achievement data that shows us where that is and where it's going and what we need to do. But there are no plans to reduce the program. Probably in the future, we'll figure out a way to serve more students.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. A couple of questions. What's the projected increase in number of students for next?
We are, our September 30th count this year was 10,998.
Right, yeah.
And our projected number is 11,131.
So, so, a couple hundred students.
I got it right. A couple hundred. Now, I give this, you know, you hear this speech every year, there's a low projection, a middle projection, a high projection. Suddenly, this year, we've ticked up to middle, until we have a second point to see what happens. We, I can't stand here and say that this year is an anomaly or this year is the beginning of a trend. We just, we just simply don't know. But we're, we're pretty comfortable because some of the projections are beyond 11,131. We're still trying to be conservative, but acknowledge the fact that we're growing.
Given that you've requested 16 new FTEs, could you tell me something about how that couple hundred students turns into 16 FTEs?
Well, when a couple hundred students come in, they don't all go to the same school, and they don't all go to the same grade level. And so, we take all of the projections of our enrollment, and we look at, the school board has set class ratios and caps, and we take that information, and we look at the enrollments by school, and we are projecting to place certain amounts of teachers at certain levels in certain schools. However, this year, for example, we had to move some people around based on enrollments that surprised us. We also may have to absorb and add positions if we're wrong, and if we have a few more students than we think we do. But generally speaking, we have a plan that puts, I don't remember the exact numbers, elementary, middle, and high. That I don't remember.
Twenty-two, 22 to 1 for elementary, and it varies by grade level. And then it's 18.5 for middle, and 20 to 1 for high school. And we look at that by school and monitor it through August and September daily, the enrollment.
Okay. Great.
The three, you heard me use the number 19, and then you heard Terry use the number 16. I just want to be clear that the, I got the 19 from the three athletic trainers that we were counting as teachers, which were showing on paper to meet our caps, when in actuality, our high schools had some significant class-size issues. So, I know that those three people are dedicated specifically to the high schools and resolving some of those problems we had this year.
Okay. Great. Once you complete the transition with VRS, will you do an analysis of where our people stand salary-wise relative to competing school districts and share that with us? Because, again, one of the things we're constantly dealing with is, you know, are we being competitive? So, that type of information can be helpful to us.
Absolutely. We have a lot of that information. We look at it, and to the degree that we can get that information, you know, we all are not forthcoming sometimes because we want to remain competitive. But eventually, it becomes public knowledge, so we can get it.
But, but right now, we're comparing apples and oranges, and that, that will be a useful analysis. This question may be for, for Ms. Larson. Could you give us a sense of where the school board is? This is capital improvement, particularly about the, you know, where this, where's the school board right now on central offices and new middle school and what have you? What's the latest thinking, and how can you help us understand sort of where, I think we all know where it's been, but where you anticipate it going?
Well, right now, our thinking is what it was when we approved the budget, because all we had to deal with at that time was that we had the James Blair site. There were no other sites forthcoming. And so, we needed to look at putting a middle school there on that site, and then, of course, that meant a change for our administrative building. Now, the county has released their budget, but we have not had an opportunity to meet since that point and to go from there. So, you know, we, it's, it's not about where we are, you know, it's about the business for us. And, you know, the administration does very important work. And we, we actually attended a workshop recently where it had the learning as the middle and then building blocks around it, trying to show what all happens, what the administration is responsible for, which I thought was a pretty good graphic and perhaps would give some better understanding about exactly what happens in the building. And so, for us, it's about our administration needs a place to do their, to do their business, and we need a new facility for our middle school students. We are, we are really hitting at 2017. We now have that pushed back to 2018 because of the planning that's been done, and we don't quite know where to go. So, until there's other land offered to us for a middle school, and if that were the case, then I think we're very happy to stay at James Blair. Knowing, however, we realize that is a large amount of space for us. We don't need all of that space for our central office. But that being said, in order to not have to build another office, we're, we're happy to stay there. We like the location. But if there isn't other area or other property forthcoming, then we are looking at putting our middle school there and moving the administration somewhere else.
So, from the standpoint of your planning horizon, to what extent is there a drop-dead date when you have to know about another site or what have you? Or where are you thinking about that in your planning horizon?
Well, we're thinking about that now. I, we've already pushed back to, instead of 2017, to 2018. So, we really need that decision made very soon so that we can start planning. If we are moving into, if the new middle school site is James Blair, we need to get the administration somewhere else and clear it out of that space so that we can renovate that and to be able to move students in. And, you know, we know- And, you know, we know that 2018, 2017, we're going to have a problem. 2018, we're going to have an even bigger problem. So, really, now is when we need to be making these decisions.
Can I ask, just to follow, I'm not sure that all the folks in the community follow some of these questions and resulting answers as closely as we have or certainly as closely as you have. Is it fair to say, then, that the only reason the school system is proposing construction of a new administration building is because you were told that there were no funds available to purchase additional land upon which could be built this necessary next middle school? And so, the only piece of land that would be available would be the James Blair site, which if the school was built there, would then force the administration to find a new home?
And no one's, to be frank, no one has even spoken to us about whether or not there are funds or there are not funds for other land. No land has been forthcoming. And I would hope that Mr. Tuttle would agree. Dr. Constantino has been, this has been something that he's been discussing with the city and the previous county administrator for the past two years at least. And during that discussion, there's not been, there's not been anything said that, oh, here's a piece of property so you can stay at James Blair. So, that is where we find ourselves right now. The only fact that we know is that, at this current time, we have property at the James Blair site that we can do something with, which would be a middle school. That is what we have approved, is a middle school. And so, in order to do that, we do need to move the administration somewhere else. Yes, that is why we are asking for an administrative building.
Now, I don't want to beat this to death, but I think it's important for people to understand that the only reason you're suggesting a new administrative building is because you have to give up the one that you're currently in.
Correct.
If a middle school is to be built on that site, which is the only site you have at your disposal at this time.
Yes, sir. That's exactly what it is. Yes. So, again, we're happy to stay there if, if another site becomes available, yes.
And another site that's the right site.
Yes. Yes. Correct.
Yeah.
And is it absolutely clear that the existing administration building and a smaller middle school cannot be accommodated on that property?
Well, at this point, we do not think so. As you all know, that's a very tight space as it is. And so, we would be in a tough spot to put both buildings on that particular spot. Plus, you know, when you're talking about middle school, you're talking about softball, baseball fields, et cetera, other things that go along with being a middle school.
But there is Quanis Park right next to it.
Yes, which we would hope to. And I think we've brought that up in joint meetings before, that we would love to use those fields if possible.
Laurie's rolling around at me. But again, I think, too, one of the concerns I have is that your guidelines for schools really are sort of suburban greenfield guidelines and that urban schools many times operate under very different circumstances. And a point, in fact, is Matthew Whaley that comes nowhere close to meeting these suburban greenfield things. But in fact, you know, in a biased manner, I would argue, is a premier elementary school that operates very well on a plot that doesn't meet those suburban standards.
Right. We have, and I hope I did not, we have no issue with, I love the location of James Blair, especially like right now, the administration being there, it's very convenient. So, when it was a school, there were kids that walked there, and it's a very centrally located for parents that are trying to get there as well. So, either way it goes, we're okay. We just need to know where we go. So.
Well, we're in this with you, as you know, and we're willing to do whatever we can to help this process move forward.
Yes, and thank you so much.
If I could just have a follow-up question. You know, as we talk about the need for additional space, I would, I think we're all thinking that the city and the county will continue to grow, and they'll eventually need to be another high school. And can we kind of put that on the radar to find another location for additional schools?
Well, we certainly, we asked for that earlier. We would like to see a plan for where schools are going to be placed. Is there property that's already been earmarked for that? That would help us tremendously in our planning. So, we know that there is land proffered up in Stonehouse. There is acres up there. So, what we need to have a discussion about what would be best served up there, what type of school. But yes, that is definitely something, a discussion that we have had more and more, knowing that we really need to have that vision for the future. So, and I would say, I appreciate you bringing up about the fact that we are growing. We are very fortunate. We have colleagues from around the state of Virginia, and right now, what they're looking at is closing schools because their enrollment has dropped so dramatically. So, we're very fortunate that we have the issue of where we need to put our students. And I realize it's an economic issue on when you talk about building, but we are fortunate that people wish to come here. And I do believe the school division is one of those reasons.
Sure. And I just want a clarification. When we talk about the need for additional space, it's, you say, "we," it's really about the kids.
Correct.
Because the collateral damage to not identifying locations and building schools in a timely manner is overcrowding.
Right.
And then we're faced with the challenges that we're faced at some of our schools today. And so, you know, we have to have this plan in place, and then having available land is just one of the elements to it.
Right. And we had, earlier this year, the administration had worked with the city planning and the county planning so that we could try to zero in on where the kids were coming from right now. But we have older neighborhoods that are turning over to younger families, and so, we're trying to keep a constant eye on that so that we can look to where is the best place and where are our kids coming from.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Ruth or Steve? Well, thank you all very much for being here. We really do appreciate this. And as I think you've heard from council, we think the schools are important. We think we have a terrific school system, and we're here to work with you to make it even better.
Thank you, and we appreciate your support very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item are public hearings, and today we have two. The first is the public hearing for budget, and the budget is scheduled for adoption on the May eighth meeting. We had a work session on Monday dealing with the budget, and today we have the official budget hearing. So, Jack, are you going to?
Yes, just my word of introduction. As we open the hearing, the notice of this hearing was published on March twenty-ninth. And of course, it's the formal budget hearing, is required by state law. But in addition to that, city council has had two work sessions on the budget. The budget's been online since the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth. And so, the budget, though, is actually five budgets, a general fund, a utility fund, capital improvement fund, a new fiduciary fund for the QuarterPath CDA, and the public assistance fund. And the budget ad does lay out a summary of all those funds, indicates the amount of proposed taxes. And just by way of summary, there's no proposed increase in the tax levy rate of fifty-seven cents per hundred. However, there is a proposed increase of three percent on the water rate to four dollars and ninety-five cents. So, with that as introduction.
Okay. Let me come back to council to see if there are any questions before I open the public hearing. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to the budgets to come forward. I have two speakers' cards. The first is Dr. John Whitely.
I'm John Whitely, and I live at one-ten Governor Berkeley Road. My intention was to speak to information provided by the school board on the budget and, in a sense, with a massive concern about twelve million dollars being expended for a new administration building and the impact that that would have on our city budget, and asking that we, with great caution, not go down that route. I'm appreciative of the discussion that you've had and especially talking about the urban model for a middle school. I'm a former middle school principal, of course, back in the dark ages, about the time electricity was happening, but when there was really true middle schooling happening. And some of the comments that have been made by the superintendent relative to, and I wish Steve were still here, relative to the new model of instructing, that happened in the Progressive Education Association movement guided by John Dewey, where he talked about non-gradedness and continuous progress, teaching each child where he or she happens to be, and guiding them through multiple experiential bases toward accomplishing their outcome. I did send to you, and I wish to, I don't know if I want to retract it or to pull it back, but I really am concerned to think, two pieces. One, that we would lose the significance of the potential of James Blair building. I don't know if you've been in there recently. I've been in there with several other folk in the last couple of weeks and have looked at the auditorium. I've looked at the gymnasium. I've looked at the cafeteria, and I've looked at that learning area. There is so much potential there for professional learning for staff. I know one of the statements from the school board was that they need space for professional learning. My God. It's right there. But when we look at community engagement, we have a perfect center for visual and performing arts. We have the perfect place if we really wanted to push that button. And if you listen to some folk recently talk about our area and the potential for culinary arts being an economic draw for folk to come to see us, right there in James Blair building, there is a cafeteria that with that equipment updated, it could become a beginning of a culinary arts school for students, for adults, hey, and maybe a visitor coming to learn about that. So, destroying that entity, that physical structure, is alarming, especially as there's a twelve million tag that says, let's put it somewhere else. The whole thing, there's some misstatements about we need all these ball fields and all this other acquisition of land to accommodate middle school students. That's not necessarily the truth. If you look at middle schooling and the years five through eight and the accommodation of their physical education needs and others, the use of land for those seldom-used spaces is deplorable. So, in your wisdom, as you look very closely to what the school board is asking you to consider to invest in it in this upcoming budget, please, with great caution, say that that James Blair site, frankly, it can, it can accommodate the administration building, and it can accommodate a contemporary, urban-focused middle school without any loss of harming anyone's learning processes at all. I was ultimately concerned when I wrote this. It just really ticked me off to see twelve million dollars go away when I couldn't find anything in there for pre-K kids. I couldn't find anything in there for looking at other learning needs of students. All I could think about was, here's another palace coming to the city of Williamsburg. Thank you.
Thank you, John. The second speaker's card I have is David Crandall.
David Crandall, two-oh-one Harrison Avenue. First of all, I want to thank each of the council members for the discussions we had, two of them with Adam, three of them with Adam, and one by myself. With respect to the budget, I want to urge you, your decisions, obviously, many in closed doors, but I'd like to urge you to make sure there's sufficient funds and sufficient flexibility to do whatever eventually gets decided whenever it does occur with respect to the transition. I, and I'm sure many of you realize that, and at least my exposure, and I assume yours too, in corporations and not-for-profits, in any organization, when you're about to change the top leadership, you really want an environment where that new person has the flexibility to create the team and even the administrative structure where positions can be redefined and responsibilities redefined and where often new skills that we, of those of us who've been around a long time, don't even foresee, but that new leader would see as being needed as part of their team. And therefore, it seems to me that, as a suggestion, that it would be very, very good for us as we look forward to the next quarter century or whatever, that we create an environment over the coming years where we use funds wherever we can to induce those who might want to retire very soon to stay on, at least within a year or so or more of whenever that position is filled. And if that can't be done through funds, and I'm happy to see city money spent in that way as an inducement to stay, that we create acting positions, as has often happened in environments I've been in, where someone within the structure is given the acting position of the vacant position, obviously, they can be an applicant for that position whenever the new environment is created. But that, it's clear that there's total flexibility for that new person to create and structure the team that they want reporting to them. So, it's just a thought, but it's what I've observed in all places I've been, including the corporations and the university that work in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anybody else wish to speak to the budget? If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion. And again, we'll be taking action on this at the May eighth council meeting. Any questions, discussion?
Go ahead.
I was here the other day, shared some thoughts.
Yeah. No, I'm looking forward to see what staff comes back with regarding the CIP and think we got.
We have some stuff. Do you want to?
On your place, just a revised CIP spreadsheet. The deals with the issue, talked about it on Monday. Phil, do you want to talk through that very briefly?
Mr. Sarah, you might need to go to the microphone.
Page with the header on it, the summary of all the things that we wanted to do regarding the underground wiring projects. As we talked about at the work session, we actually moved up the Second Street Engineering to the FY fifteen budget, so that would be in the upcoming year with the Second Street Underground Wiring Project itself pushed up to 2017. So, that would be two years ahead of where we had it before. We also have Second Street continue to have the design in fifteen with the second, I mean, South Henry Street in fifteen with the construction of the eight hundred forty-five thousand still in sixteen. And New York Street is over into FY sixteen for the underground wiring piece itself. So, if you look at the other piece right here, you try to see what it looked like. There's eighty thousand for next year, and that would be two pieces of the planning cost, and then the FY sixteen dollars of a million, twenty thousand, and then one point two-six million in FY seventeen. So, that's how we did, basically, just pushing up the Second Street project.
And just add to that, depending on how that planning goes, the preliminary engineering and the more precise cost estimates, then we might see better just how that money needs to flow between those years, a year from now.
Any questions about that? I think, thank you for doing that, and I think that responded to the discussion we had the other day. Any further questions, discussion? Well, again, you missed Monday's session, so I don't know if there's anything that you want to add.
No. I'd just like to, it seems like we do it every year, but thank Mr. Sarah and Mr. Tuttle for pulling together what seems to be, I don't know how to describe it, a really successful budget. I mean, working with limited resources and accomplishing all the things in the community that get accomplished, many of which we place significant priority on, but all are important to someone, but some just happen to be more visible than others. But being able to pull this all together and put together a working document, to me, is, something must take a is, something must take a tremendous amount of work. And so I just really appreciate your effort in those regards. And I think it's also interesting, or maybe noteworthy, how few concerns we hear expressed by the citizens of this community, unless, of course, we happen to be talking about raising the tax rate. So I think that goes to a point I've heard Mr. Potts make, that for the most part, people seem to think that most of the city, or the way the city's being run, it's on the right track, and the way the money is being spent, and the priorities that have been established. And those things don't happen by accident. They don't happen easily. It takes a lot of planning. And one other point I'd like to make, the tying of the biennial goals and initiatives to the budget document is just a huge step in, a couple of years passed now, but a huge step in helping to ensure that we're funding those things that we've identified as priorities.
And we did have a discussion about the improved presentation of that information as well in this budget, and it seems to me we're, you know, each year we get more and better information and tying of those, and this budget certainly does that.
I think one of the things that, I was talking to somebody this afternoon, this morning rather, that they were pleased to see was that staff was able to budget some extra money to go to the EDA for programs that may come forward, and then also the $250,000 that's been proposed to go to tourism marketing for special projects. And to me, I think that's an indication that we believe in our economy. We have to work on our economy and do what we can, while it's not a lot of money, but it's some money, that we're putting forth that effort with dollars to make things happen. So to me, I think that resonates well with a lot of people that I speak to.
Same here, and I think that it, you know, it's a recognition of sort of investment opportunities that can come in those areas and provides us budget flexibility to deal with those when they come forward. So I think it is both a change and an improvement. Anything else? With that, we'll take action on the budget at our May 8 meeting.
Correct.
So are we anticipating the work session on Monday?
That was the question I was going to ask. If you, at this point, if you need it, we will do it. If you don't at this point, and you're okay to May the 8th, then we won't.
Well, you know, I mean, if we don't, you know, the only thing that, in the conversation that I had today, it looks like I seem to know here nodding heads about meeting. As we, as an example, we have a contract with the library that funds the library, and that's, for obvious reasons. ought we think about at least a memorandum of understanding, some sort of statement with regards to our tourism dollars that says a couple of things. And I haven't clearly made a list in my mind, and that would be something I'd want to talk about on the 14th, should we decide to meet. But, you know, for example, one of the issues that I think has been a question for me is, does all the money that we invest each year get spent each year? And I know in the case of one organization, there seems to be a growing fund balance, which is a product of extra money. Where does that extra money come from? Whether it's on the dues side, or is it from the money that municipalities give? I'd like to see, make sure that that money gets spent, and whether that's a verbal agreement or a memorandum of understanding, but really a statement of our intent with these dollars, and that we have to have results, whatever they are, and they can define those. You know, I know it's hard to set measurables, but we, you know, we've got to change the rhetoric. As much as we are with the additional investments, changing the rhetoric, you know, we've got to ensure that they understand the magnitude of what it is that we expect of them. And I don't know how we communicate that, and so that's why I propose some sort of memorandum of understanding.
Is that something for a budget work session, or would we be better off doing that at our retreat?
In lots of ways, I think that that's an issue that comes as we begin to look at sort of the statement of goals, objectives, and outcomes for the next two years, that that's sort of really an appropriate time to both discuss that and think about sort of how we want to incorporate that in the process. I think, you know, I think in my discussions with, particularly with the Chamber and Tourism Alliance, that, you know, I've been very clear with them that we anticipate that all the money that the city gives them goes directly for promotion of the destination. And I think, you know, exactly how we want to clarify that or what have you, might be a better discussion for a retreat as we think about sort of the next two years and our goals and objectives and outcomes.
I'm not sure if it's a retreat conversation, or if it's a budget conversation, but I have it on my calendar. And Mr. Potts would like to meet, I mean, I enjoy our time together. I mean, if you have some questions to raise about the budget, I'd support raising them now before we pass the budget. And we might decide at the budget work session. This is something that's more appropriate to talk about later, or at a different time. But I'd at least give you the opportunity to put your thoughts together.
I don't, it's probably not a budget question. I don't have an issue with funding these elements. And I'm not trying to put forth a threat of any nature, but I think we ought to, council ought to have a policy or a statement that clearly communicates what it is that we want done, you know, with this money. So I think a retreat is maybe too far down the road. I don't know. So maybe, maybe we could think about that and have some conversations with staff, and, you know, if we collectively think it's an appropriate action.
We do also have the work session on the 5th before the 8th. So I'm comfortable not meeting Monday.
So, but we could, we could make that a topic for the work session, the Monday before the budget. Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we will not have the budget work session next Monday, but we will continue discussion at our work session in May.
And as part of that, Mr. Sarah, I'll direct this to you, or Mr. Tuttle, if you could help us understand as well how we know from whatever the organizations are for whom we provide outside funding, if that's the right term, how do we know how, I don't know whether you always know how the money's spent, but how is city staff satisfied that the funds were used in the manner with which they were intended? If you could just help us understand that, you don't have to do it now. We can do it.
That might be appropriate to do at the May work session.
Right, because I think it all kind of ties together.
And that would include sort of Arts Commission and Human Services, as well as tourism promotion, and, you know, any funds that we give to outside, sort of what's the internal sort of monitoring and verification process that goes on.
Yeah, I think that would help us get partway down the path that you've described.
And this is, and I'm not trying to imply that anything underhand is going on. I just, I think we should know. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have a second public hearing, and this is the Evelyn Nursery request. There are two issues here. We can have a single public hearing for both of them, is that correct, Chris? And then if we want, we can do them separately, which I would recommend we do. But we have a public hearing today on two issues. One is PCR 14-03, the request of Evelyn Nursery to amend the zoning ordinance to allow garden centers as a special use permit in B2 districts, and PCR 14-04, request of Evelyn Nursery for a special use permit for a garden center at 910 Capital Landing Road. Carolyn?
Good afternoon, Mayor Holman, members of council. As stated, Patrick Evelyn, on behalf of Evelyn Nursery, proposing to open a garden center at 910 Capital Landing Road. The first case, 14003, contains three text changes required to add garden centers to the city's zoning ordinance. The first text change is to define a garden center, which is a retail establishment that sells plants, horticultural, and garden supplies and services. Bolt materials such as mulch, gravel, topsoil, sand, and pavers may also be sold. The second change is where to allow a garden center. Staff recommends allowing garden centers with a special use permit in the B2 corridor business district, which may include outdoor display and storage. If outdoor display and storage are proposed, screening is required as noted in my memo. The third change is parking. It is recommended that one parking space for each 500 square feet of floor area, plus one parking space for each 5,000 square feet of outdoor display or storage area be approved. The second request is 14004. This is for the special use permit for the garden center at 910 Capital Landing Road, which is formerly the old city shop that you see here, outlined in red as the property. The applicant proposes to demolish two small additions, one on the left side of the building here, and addition in the back of the storage bay area for the proposed garden center. The front portion of the building will contain an office, indoor retail showroom, and equipment storage. The rear bay areas and area in front of the bay areas will contain garden sales. They propose removing paving in front of the building and replacing it with landscaping. Two entrances will be constructed with 19 parking spaces on the right side of the property, and a wooden board-on-board fence and gate is proposed to screen the fronts and sides of the property from view. A 10-foot landscape strip is proposed in front of the fence. All storage will be located behind the fence area and will not exceed eight feet in height. This property is designated as corridor commercial land use in the 2013 comp plan. This land use category designates land on the city's heavily traveled entrance corridors for commercial and service uses primarily oriented towards the automobile. This property is located in the B2 district, which is designed to apply to corridor, commercial corridors, and is in place for Capital Landing Road, Second Street, York Street, Richmond Road, west of New Hope Road, and Jamestown Route 199. The proposed addition of garden centers as a use requiring a special use permit in the B2 district will ensure that any projects approved are in harmony with the comp plan, other uses in the B2 district, and uses on adjacent properties. The special use permit process allows conditions such as bonds, special lighting requirements, limitation on the hours of operation, additional open space, landscaping, and screening requirements to be imposed on a case-by-case basis for each application. Adding garden centers as a special use permit in the B2 district requires adding a definition for garden centers and amending the parking regulations for garden centers as noted previously. The applicant proposes to use the properties and portions of the existing building for a garden center. They propose to upgrade the property by renovating the existing building, removing the large amount of pavement in front, and landscaping the property. The outdoor storage area will be screened from view by fencing and landscaping. The proposed use of a garden center at this location will bring a use that is not currently located in the city, and will upgrade the building in sight, which will enhance the streetscape of Capital Landing Road. The Architecture Review Board approved the conceptual design and recommended conceptual approval of the building with conditions. Planning Commission held a public hearing on March 19th. One of the representatives spoke in favor of the request. Therefore, Planning Commission recommends to City Council that for PCR 14-003, the text changes, approval by a vote of 6-0, that the proposed text changes be approved as detailed in the proposed ordinance 14-11. For PCR 14-4, the special use permit, Planning Commission also recommended that City Council approve the special use permit for Evelyn Garden Center at 910 Capital Landing Road. Condition upon the three conditions is outlined in staff's memo. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. Mr. Evelyn and representatives of Evelyn and Gardens are here. If you have any questions, if any.
Great. Carolyn, thank you very much for that. Let me come back to council for any questions for Carolyn before we.
Hi, I have a question. Carolyn, this thing that says the height of the material stored outside the building shall not exceed the height of the fence, does that include plant material? I mean, there are trees that are higher than.
Yeah, it's not, it's mainly the, this area in the back here will be used for the mulch and the stockpiling of sand and topsoil and those kinds of things. It's not so much the plant material. It's more the storage of the bolt materials.
So this sentence doesn't keep them from having trees taller than six feet on their property?
This is to mainly keep the bolt materials below the heights of the wooden fence.
Couldn't it be read like that, if a neighbor objected?
I don't think that's the intent, but.
I mean, I wouldn't want them not to be able to have mature trees, for sure.
We could amend that to just say bolt storage materials.
Well, I don't know, I'd be a little more comfortable. I don't know about, you know, if it's a problem or not.
Any thoughts on that?
Well, you could say the height of non-plant materials. It's hard to see people, well, people might object to anything, but you wouldn't think more plants would create too much of an objection. Can I, may I ask you quite another question? Because, Murphy, oftentimes garden centers have related activities that take place through the operation of the center, which might include landscape design, or maybe even more frequently, irrigation system work. It doesn't, you know, where they're sending people out to do work on individuals' properties, it doesn't sound like that's part of what's allowed here.
It's my understanding that's not. They are proposing to do landscape design in those types of, but I don't think they're looking at doing, you know, irrigation systems and those kinds of things. The applicants may be better to answer that, but it's my understanding they're not.
And the only reason I ask is they sometimes create a little more intensive use of the property than a retail sales area with, you know, customer pickup or delivery. That was my only question. But I, Ms. Newton, if you feel comfortable with some non-plant material notation, I'd be just for you on that.
That's fine. I just don't want them to be constrained by some misinterpretation of this.
Sometimes you add too many words in it. You start to develop constraints. So I think if the applicant's happy, I would satisfy the language.
Okay. Carolyn, any other things for us now? With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to this to please come forward and state your name and address. With that, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action.
I'm coming. I'd just like to thank the applicant for coming forth with a proposal to utilize this property in this way. It's a wonderful adaptive reuse of, underutilized is probably an overly generous term for this property. You could even call it derelict in a way. I mean, it's really taking away what's a detraction from the corridor and turning it into a positive economic element, a positive aesthetic element, and one more step in the right direction on bringing a level of balanced activity to the Capital Landing Corridor in the Northeast Triangle that is sensitive to both our desire and the community's desire for a greater commercial base, but also respectful of the needs and desires of the residents who live in that area, who want to make sure that that activity is not overly done. And I just think this is terrific, and I really appreciate you going to all the effort to go through the city processes and then to develop the property in this way, because I see it as a terrific addition to an important area of the city and one that's much needed at this time.
I'd echo what Paul said, you know, a lot of good things going on on Second Street. Now, we're talking about a few new things on Capital Landing Road, so that's really a corridor and transition in the right direction.
And this is part of the discussion we've had for many years about the Northeast Triangle, trying to generate new investments over there, and I think we're seeing it. We probably ought to accelerate the power lines on Capital Landing now, get them underground. Thank you all.
Okay. And again, I'll add my thanks to you guys for bringing forth a really terrific proposal and working with the city, and compliment staff for the terrific job they've done in getting this forward, and the Planning Commission as well. With that, we can take action. Do we want to modify the wording of?
I think I'd like it to say the height of the non-plant materials.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we approve proposed ordinance 14-11. This is the text changes for gardens.
Yeah. Where does the non-plant material? Where does the non-plant material fall?
It's in the next one, yeah.
So we can.
A second motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve proposed ordinance fourteen dash eleven. Could you call the roll, please, Lisa?
Aye.
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 Vice Mayor Riley.
Aye.
Mr. Postner.
Aye.
Okay, and the next is.
I move that we approve the special use permit as recommended by the Planning Commission with the three conditions, yet modifying one of the conditions, the first condition to say the height of the non-plant materials stored outside the building on the property shall not exceed the height of the proposed fence.
Second.
So.
Not living plant material, or, you know, is mulch a plant material? I mean, I don't know.
It's a byproduct.
This is the challenge I think we get into.
Carolyn, do you have any recommendation for us at this point, do you think?
I'm sorry why I say the bulk materials, but it's best.
Judy, are you?
I think non-plant material.
Non-plant material, yeah, yeah.
And if it turns out to be a problem, you come back and we'll fix it.
Okay.
I need a second.
So I have a motion and a second.
I second.
Could you call the roll, please, Lisa?
Ms. Newtonson. Aye.
Mr. Postner. Aye. Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Riley.
Aye.
Mr. Postner.
Aye.
Terrific. Again, thank you guys for being here today, and thank you for your proposal. We look forward to a new business in the city. Our next order of business are reports, first monthly financial statements. Jack, anything?
Just one thing to point out, before I do, I'd like to comment on the S and P triple A. When they say very strong management, they make no distinction between the elected part of that and the appointed part of that. In fact, if you think about it, the elected part of that is what's, that not only sets the financial policies, but also has the discipline to live within those financial policies that makes all the difference. So the council is very much part of very strong management. Then on the green sheets, I just, we are now at the nine-month point through the year. I'd point out that on the revenue side, just comparing exactly where we were at the same point last year, we're seven hundred thousand dollars roughly ahead of where we were last year. That's good, but it's also true that we're about one point one million dollars, we've spent one point one million dollars more at this point in the year than we did last year, and about two-thirds of that is in the school side of it. So we know where that's come from, but it just shows you how cautious we have to be if we want to hang on to this side. And so I'd point that out, and be happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
Yes.
Monthly Department of Operator Reports, Jack, anything?
Just one thing I'd like to ask, Dan Clayton, if he would make an introduction, Dan?
We have a new street superintendent on board who came to us in December. He hailed from Fort Wayne, Indiana. His name is Craig Bowler. One of Craig's campers, you see. Craig, I guess, came in the middle of December, and I think he came in like a storm. We've had four, four snowfalls since Craig's arrived, so he's hit the ground running pretty hard. Actually, he's prepared for five. One of them didn't pan out, he had to do all the preparation, so he's been, he's off to a good start.
Good. So did he bring the snow with him?
Yeah, one of the biggest snow things he's had in a long time.
Welcome. Welcome, and the city is a terrific place to work, and we've got a wonderful team, and Dan's a leader in the public works, but we welcome you, and I think City Council stands ready to help you in any way you can, and we hope that you will, we'll see lots of good things happening. We already are beginning to see some things happening on Prince George Street and some repaving there, so, but welcome. We really do appreciate you coming on board. City manager reports, we have two. The first is water tank painting project.
City Engineer Aaron Small will give this report.
Aaron, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am not here to talk about stormwater, so you can relax a little bit. Today, I'm bringing forth for your approval the contract award for repainting of three of the city's water tanks. The first one to mention is the half-million gallon Jamestown elevated tank, which is near the corner of Route one ninety-nine and Jamestown Road. We also have the half-million gallon Magruder elevated tank located at the James York Plaza in York County, but it is on our system, and also the one-million gallon city shop ground reservoir located right here behind the municipal building. Tank repainting is a normal periodic task that is needed to maintain a quality public water supply. These three tanks were last painted in nineteen ninety-four, when they were sandblasted completely down to bare metal and recoded. That coating was expected to only last about ten to fifteen years, and as you can see, we've made it to twenty. This time, we will be overcoating the exterior completely and performing spot repairs on the interior of the tank. We'll also be performing some structural upgrades to bring ladders and access railings up to current OSHA standards. We advertised the project in February and received five bids on March nineteenth. The apparent low bidder is Utility Service Company, Inc. Although the city has never worked with these, this contractor, we did check numerous references and were more than satisfied with their opinions. They're currently under contract now with Gloucester County to maintain their facilities, and they were very highly recommending this company. Bond Council's approval, we expect the work to start with the city shop tank in May, followed by the Jamestown tank, and then the Magruder tank, and we expect all the work to be completed by the end of the year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Right, thank you, Aaron. Any questions on this?
One question. The term, the apparent low bidder?
Yes.
What is apparent? Is there some hidden element of this?
That's just a legal term we use in purchasing. I always say apparent because that's the one that has the current numbers. I've always just learned to use that term. They are the low bidder. Many times, sometimes they have errors in their, in their bid.
Okay, thank you.
I assume we're going with the same color?
Yes. Generally, yes.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move the council authorize the city manager to award the bid and execute a contract with Utility Service Company Incorporated for the water tank painting project in the amount of four hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Lisa, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson. Aye.
Mr. Postner.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Riley.
Aye.
Mr. Postner.
Aye.
Next city manager report is non-emergency ambulance services proposed resolutions fourteen dash oh two.
Chief Dent will give this report.
Chief, welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Holman, members of city council, state regulations require the operator of an ambulance service to obtain approval of the local governing body of each locality where the agency plans to maintain an office or have provided EMS vehicle for response within the locality. American Medical Response Mid-Atlantic, Inc., AMR, plans to stage basic and advanced life support ambulances at Riverside Doctors Hospital to provide contracted non-emergency patient transports. Excuse me. Additional non-emergency services will be provided to nursing homes and continuing care facilities. The Williamsburg Fire Department will continue to maintain the primary responder to nine-one-one calls. The following requirements shall apply to AMR when providing services within the city of Williamsburg. AMR is not an agent or representative of the city, and transports will be limited to non-emergency. AMR will not provide service nor respond to nine-one-one calls unless authorized by the city, authorized official of the city of Williamsburg Fire Department. AMR is required to obey all applicable federal, state, and local laws and maintain equipment in a safe and sanitary condition in accordance with Virginia Office of EMS rules and regulations, and they must pay federal, state, and local taxes. Just a little bit of history on AMR, their parent company is American Medical Response, Inc. They've operated nationwide for many years. They currently provide services in over forty states and the District of Columbia. They employ almost nineteen thousand workers with a fleet of over four thousand vehicles, and I did follow up, they are in good standing with the Commonwealth of Virginia. They provide services in other parts of Virginia, mainly northern Virginia. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and we do have some representatives from AMR here if you have any questions for them.
Perfect, thank you, chief. Any questions?
I have a question, chief. You mentioned a couple of things AMR will not do. I'm curious, is, in the event of some significant event in the city or surrounding counties where additional resources are needed, is there any obligation other than just hope for good faith that AMR will participate in an event of need?
Yes, and I think there is a good faith that we, if we request their services, that they would provide that service to us. And actually, I recently attended the Emergency Management Symposium in Hampton, and it was amazing to me, we, there was a presenter there that talked about the Boston Marathon tragedy. They had thirty medic units staged at the finish line, and this was prior to them even imagining that they would have a bombing at the Boston Marathon. So if we were to have an event like that, we're going to call on all the resources that are available to us, because as you can imagine, that would deplete all the resources on the peninsula to respond to some event like that.
Thank you.
If not, I'll take, thank you, chief, very much.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council adopt resolution fourteen dash zero two, authorizing the operation of ambulance services at Williamsburg Riverside Doctors Hospital by American Medical Response Mid-Atlantic Incorporated under the terms and conditions provided in the proposed resolutions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Lisa, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson.
Aye. Mr. Postner.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Riley.
Aye.
Mr. Postner.
Aye.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here today as well. Next order of business, city attorney reports, I believe we have none. Unfinished business, and new business, we have an appointment.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council adopt resolution fourteen dash zero one, recommending to the Williamsburg James City County Circuit Court the appointment of Beverly Britannia Austin to the Board of Equalization for a term to expire June thirty, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Lisa, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson. Aye.
Mr. Postner.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Riley.
Aye.
Mr. Postner.
Aye.
Final agenda item for the day is open forum, a time when anyone who wishes to address council on any matter may do so. If you wish to address council, please come forward and state your name and address.
Good afternoon, my name is Gary Shelley. I live at two oh five Indian Springs Road, and I'm here once again to speak of the one ten Harrison Avenue scandal, and particularly the dishonor that you, Mr. Mayor, with your involvement in it has brought not only to you, but by extension to our city council. Some of what I have to say today, I said at last month's session, but I will repeat since you were absent. I stand firmly behind my accusation that you deceived the public. I have records of city council minutes, work sessions, retreats, emails, FOIAs, meetings with city officials, newspaper accounts from the Daily Press, Virginia Gazette, Flat Hat, and Virginia Informer. Justice Louis D. Brandeis once remarked that sunlight is said to be the best of disinfectants. Justice Brandeis was correct. A FOIA revealed your deception. I've gone over this before, but you have yet to respond. At this point, perhaps the most important aspect of the fiasco is the window that has been opened to allow the public to see how this city operates and evaluate your character. Our process of governance has checks and balances. It is incumbent upon our elected officials to be open, honest, transparent, responsible, accountable, and communicative. You have failed us badly. It is a responsibility of the public and the press to call out dishonest officials. No one can say that I'm not doing my part. We can't help but notice that you have never denied your wrongdoing. We can't help but notice that no one has stepped up in your defense. Last month, I reminded Vice Mayor Riley, who presided in your absence, of remarks he had made at an earlier council session, the communication between city officials and the public is a two-way street. I have been communicating loud and clear for some time now. Mr. Riley has apparently learned well from you, remained silent. So much for conviction. As I said earlier, your deceit stains the entire council. I'm going to leave you with the sage words of Sir Walter Scott, a lesson that most of us are taught as a child. Oh, what a tangled web we weave, and first we practice to deceive. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to address city council? If so, please come forward and state your name and address.
The other day, I had the pleasure, well, it wasn't a pleasure. I thought I had a serious water leak. I got this water bill, and I thought, I can go out there and check the meter. I didn't really know exactly what to look for, so I called Dan Clayton, and within forty-five minutes, folk had been out there and reported back to me that the meter was not whirling. Evidently, I did not have a water issue. I say this because he's pretty good at what he does. In fact, he's excellent, and I really appreciate him and his evidence of the other folk employed by the city. I think the level of probity that exists within the city is commendable, and I think that you should wear that badge quite well. Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? If not, I believe we have something for closed session.
I believe you're correct. Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed session pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing one personnel matter per sub-paragraph one concerning disciplinary action, and one legal matter per sub-paragraph seven for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation concerning a personnel matter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Lisa?
Ms. Newtonson. Aye.
Mr. Postner.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Riley.
Aye.
Mr. Postner. Aye.
We'll take a five-minute recess and come back into closed session.